Good morning. It's 10:00 AM and I will call this meeting to order. Carrie, will you please take role?
Chair Brooks.
Here.
Vice Chair Ariscotta. Regent Boylan.
Aye.
Regent Brager. Regent Brown. Regent Carvalho. Regent Cruz Crawford.
Here.
Regent Del Carlo.
Here.
Regent Downs.
Here.
Regent Goodman.
Here.
Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Perkins.
Here.
Regent Tarkanian.
Here.
You have a quorum present.
Thank you, Carrie. Regent McMichael, will you kindly lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Before we begin today, I'd like to thank Deputy Attorney General Joe Becker for once again being here and ensuring process. I will now move to Agenda Item Number One, which is Public Comment. Is there any public comment in Elko?
There is no public comment in Elko at this time.
Thank you. Did he say there was one or none? None. Thank you. Any public comments in Reno?
There is.
Good morning, Kent Urban, K-E-N-T-E-R-V-I-N, representing the Nevada Faculty Alliance. For 40 years, NFA has worked to empower our members to be fully engaged in our mission to help students succeed. Collective bargaining is an important part of that engagement, negotiating on matters of mutual interest between faculty and institutional administrations to promote institutional efficiency. Support of collective bargaining is already the policy of the Board of Regents in Title Four, Chapter Four of the Handbook. With SJR VII on the horizon, it is time to secure ENSI's authority to collectively bargain in statute rather than just in policy. State classified employees gained the statutory right to collectively bargain in 2019. Since then, there have been disparities in the treatment between employee groups at ENSI. In 2021, legislators gave ENSI employees in state collective bargaining units a 3% cost of living increase, while other employees, including faculty in our own collective bargaining units, received only a 1% COLA. A bill will be introduced this session to properly place collective bargaining provisions for ENSI professional employees in statute. As described in our written comment, the bill will mimic the rights and responsibilities currently in NRS 288 for other public employers and employee groups in Nevada. It will not change Nevada as a right-to-work state with strong anti-strike provisions for public employees. We request support from the Board for full collective bargaining for ENSI professional employees when the bill is introduced. As outlined in our written comments, the bill retains or enhances the authority of the Board of Regents over collective bargaining processes while allowing for either party to go to the independent state Employee Management Relations Board for prompt resolution of disputes over negotiation of contracts, the same as other public employees in Nevada. Thank you.
Hello, Regents and Presidents. My name is Brad Summerhill, S-U-M-M-E-R-H-I-L-L. I am a TMCC Community College Professor of English, recently elected Chair of the Faculty Senate Salary and Benefits Committee, former Senate Chair of Chairs. I am also speaking regarding Item Four Legislative Discussion. I'd like to speak in favor of Bill Draft Resolution 155. We need your support to establish collective bargaining for ENSI faculty, the same rights that ENSI classified staff right now enjoy. But really, I'm here to tell you quickly about two friends of mine, Hugh Doe and Josh Shin. Hugh is/was the Chair of the Math Department. We played chess together. He was a beekeeper. I would trade him honey for eggs. And Josh and I were football fans. I invited him into my poker group, and he was a good English Department colleague. Both have departed in the past 18 months. Our system is training people how to perfect their craft and then sending them to, in this case, Michigan and Missouri, where they will be fine contributing members of those communities. It's not just ENSI. It's our communities who are losing good people. Bill Draft Resolution 155 will lend stability to our system and will help with faculty retention, which is a huge problem that ENSI faces right now. Thank you for your time and attention.
Good morning. My name is Ian Harthshorn, H-A-R-T-S-H-O-R-N. I'm a faculty member at UNR and a member of the Nevada Faculty Alliance. I strongly encourage our Regents to support BDR 155, a bill rationalizing and normalizing collective bargaining across the ENSI system. ENSI's current outdated rules precludes the use of a well-functioning and well-established government employee management relations board at the state level. This burdens the Regents and the system and often puts them in the uncomfortable role of adjudicating between faculty and campus management. By ensuring professional staff have the same labor relation system as all other state employees, our police, our city and state workers, and our K-12 teachers, ENSI maximizes its efficiency and prevents costly and reputation-damaging litigation. Faculty and campus management have shown the ability and the willingness to come together and bargain in good faith. We need an updated statute to ensure we have all the tools at our disposal for a world-class professional system. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jim New, N-E-W. I am a faculty member and a president of the TMCC Chapter of NFA. Faculty work conditions are student learning conditions. With that in mind, I will direct my comments to Items Number Four and Five on today's agenda. I was happy to see the collective bargaining bill for ENSI professionals among the legislative topics you'll discuss today. As you may have already heard, the 8,000 ENSI faculty members constitute the largest group of public employees in Nevada without collective bargaining rights in state law. TMCC was the first college approved for collective bargaining in 1992 under Title Four of the Handbook. I have been at the bargaining table multiple times, both as an administrator and a faculty member. Each negotiation has clarified and improved processes to the benefit of both faculty and administrators. For issues like dispute resolution, workload assignments, the annual evaluation process, the collective bargaining bill will still allow these local negotiations on specific issues, but it will also level the playing field for all institutions, and I strongly encourage the Board to pass a resolution in support of this bill. With regard to the strategic plan, I applaud the Board for its student-centric approach. Unfortunately, this plan fails to acknowledge the critical role that employees serve. An engaged and dynamic workforce is essential for the system to achieve its objectives. But salary policies that have resulted in years of compensation stagnation, inadequate cost of living adjustments, and cuts to core benefits have led to demoralization, high turnover, and general dissatisfaction among the rank and file. Since faculty work conditions are student learning conditions, I encourage the Board to add language to the strategic plan that values and nurtures our human capital at all levels of ENSI. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude public comments in Reno?
It does.
Thank you. Public comments in Las Vegas?
Doug Unger, D-O-U-G, U-N-G-E-R, President, UNLV Chapter Nevada Faculty Alliance. Thank you, Chair Brooks, Vice Chair Ariscotta, and distinguished Regents for your consideration. For Agenda Item Four, Proposed Legislation, we hope the Board can support collective bargaining for professional employees, including ENSI faculty. We've been meeting with some of you, and you've asked, why do faculty need collective bargaining? Strong reasons are how collective bargaining correlates with higher retention and graduation rates, how we could resolve disputes more equitably, how ENSI could save millions in litigation costs through mediation and arbitration. Right now, faculty have almost no say in salaries that are, by latest comparisons, 16% to 21% below national averages. We have a 14% turnover rate. Administrators increasingly ignore recommendations of peer review and grievance committees. It's difficult to hire in many disciplines. To truth be known, our faculty feel powerless, treated as mere employees of a machinery that turns out a certain percentage of graduates per year. We are scarcely even acknowledged on the new ENSI and college and university websites. How do you expect to attract students by barely mentioning who will teach them? Surveys show 2/3 of our faculty consider collective bargaining a possible solution. The art of being a professor is not only mastering the skills and knowledge we teach, it's the art of enthusiasm, showing students not only our fields and subjects but our passion for them. Nothing in this system succeeds unless we do. We support collective bargaining to make sure faculty are no longer overlooked so that our voices are heard, so that we can better do this passionate work for students so they can learn and achieve and become one day the most joyous possible versions of themselves. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Sondra Cosgrove. I'm a history professor at the College of Southern Nevada. I'm here to speak this morning about Assembly Bill 37, which we'll be discussing later today. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Nevada Advisory Committee to the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights. And in that organization, two years ago, we undertook a study to determine the impact of remote learning on the students and their families from a civil rights perspective. And as you can imagine, we heard a lot about mental health. We learned a lot about/had heard a lot about crisis that the students were in, crisis that families were in. But we did not hear the pandemic caused that crisis. What we heard is this was already a crisis that the pandemic made much worse. And so it's not going to be good enough to say, well, things are back to normal, so things will get fixed with mental health. That is not going to be the case. It's just going to stay bad, and it's going to get worse. So AB 37, which Dr. Sarah Hunt, who's back here, has been working on this idea for a long time, and I support her 1,000%, will authorize ENSI to create a workforce center for behavioral and mental health. We need to have a systemic approach, and it needs to be one that is written down and everybody understands what it is so that we can start addressing this problem, because I can tell you, my students are not okay. My students are still suffering and having problems. They went through a traumatic experience, and they're going to probably need help for a while. So I'm here to strongly ask you, please support Assembly Bill 37.
Good morning. My name is Steve Solz, S-O-L-T-Z. I am a faculty member at the College of Southern Nevada and a member of NFA. I'm here representing myself to ask the Board of Regents to support NFA's bill, BDR 155. This is the third time the NFA has attempted to get a bill passed that would provide more equitable treatment of our collective bargaining units by the state of Nevada. As you know, ENSI faculty are not currently treated the same as police, firemen, ENSI classified members, or other classified bargaining units in the state. One example of that treatment was in the 2021 legislative session, as Kent alluded to, where we were awarded a 1% COLA instead of the 3% COLA. What wasn't mentioned is a specific legislator mentioned that if we had wanted 3%, like the other state collective bargaining units, we should become collective bargaining units, which we already are and many ENSI institutions currently have, collective bargaining units. So we, if we had had that recognition back then, we would have 2% more money. I would have 2% more money currently now. I believe that this bill will also make the Board of Regents' job easier in that when contract disputes cannot be resolved, they will be referred to the EMRB, the Nevada Government Employee Relation Management Board, that's a mouthful, which will take it out of the hands of campus administrators and the Board of Regents, which is, as currently structured, is perceived by faculty as somewhat biased. As a person who has helped negotiate two contracts, I believe the time is right for ENSI to work with NFA and support passage of BDR 155. I would just like to take my last few seconds here to say, as a professor, I always appreciate when my students look at me when I talk, and I have observed that that is not always the case of the people that have taken their own time to come down and talk to you. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Stacy Walters. I'm faculty member at CSN and NFA member and bargaining chair at CSN. I'm here today to ask the Chancellor and Regents to support the bill, BDR 155, called "Collective Bargaining for Professional Employees," which is expected to have bipartisan support in this legislative cycle. ENSI faculty have limited collective bargaining rights under the ENSI Handbook, Title Four, Chapter Four, but we need the same rights and responsibilities as other public employees in Nevada in NRS 288. I was here in December speaking on the successful CSN collective bargaining agreement, and I can say that faculty need a morale boost. They need the same 3% COLAs and the same rights as all other Nevada state employees. Supporting this bill says that you and ENSI care about employees and believe your employees should be heard. This bill allows ENSI employees to utilize the existing resources of the Nevada Government Employee Management Relations Board, or EMRB, when they have grievances. It creates mutual rules for administration and faculty, such as simple due process for grievances. It create, ENSI code allows a collective bargaining process, that's true, but it also allows one side to control the rules of engagement without independent third-party appeals, thus creating expensive lawsuits that often bear your name as Regents. However, if we instead use unions and arbitration to facilitate grievances, it will reduce ENSI's expenses on litigations and settlements by redirecting employee grievances to the clear, established, tried-and-true EMRB structures used by all other Nevada state employees. Faculty need your voice, and state legislators need to hear you state that ENSI supports BDR 155, the collective bargaining bill. Give state employees, give state employees equal rights. Thank you for supporting ENSI faculty.
Thank you. And as there is no other public comment in Las Vegas, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Two, System Policy Regarding Legislative Session. I'll ask our Acting Chancellor to please come up and provide us that information.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Regents. For the record, Dale Urkiaga, Acting Chancellor. I warned the Chair this morning that I'm in a good, sassy mood today. I like legislative sessions because of my experience there. Not everyone likes them, I do. And I also have a brand-new granddaughter who's three weeks old today. So buckle up, folks, I'm in one of those moods. I'm very excited to bring to you today a series of agenda items to prepare this institution for Monday morning, when the Nevada Legislature convenes in Carson City. And the first place to start is the Board's existing policy about how the system is represented in Carson and how the system speaks in Carson City. Those of you who went through the Roles and Responsibilities Committee, Roles and Responsibilities of the Chancellor Committee that met last year have heard some of this history, but a bit of it bears repeating. The Office of Chancellor was created in 1968 by the Board of Regents and subsequently codified by the Nevada Legislature in 1969. Since 1968, one role of the Chancellor has been clear, and that is to represent this body, the Board, before the Governor of Nevada and the state legislature. And so the Board has adopted policy over the years to put guardrails on how that occurs. And that is the policy which you have as an attachment to this agenda item. The policy covers a number of other things as well, so I commend it to you, as I know you always hear me say, I know you read your handbook and the Procedures and Guidelines manual at the weekend. And so this policy contains a lot of language that is applicable to the Board and its duties. You may also wish to, we did not provide this copy with you, but if you look to, I'll have to look it up, Title Four, Chapter One, Section Two, the Ethical Code of Conduct for Regents, also contains language that sort of mirrors this policy. So I'll start then with the role of the Board. The Board of Regents acts as a body, and you'll see in this policy and you'll see in the Code of Ethical Conduct, as an individual, you cannot bind the Board. You can go to Carson City in your personal capacity, you are elected officials, you represent folks in your district, but when in Carson City, if the Board has not taken a position, you can't say, under your own policies, "I'm here for the Board of Regents." You have to say, "I'm here as Regent," state your name. So that's part of this Board's corporate entity. You act as a body. You pass direction or policy to me by a vote. And so that's the first little guardrail that you all have set for yourselves, that on this matter and really on no matter can a single Board member bind the Board. What I would ask of you, however, because I know you all, like me, love the Legislature and can't wait to go, and so I would ask you two things. One, I know you all have relationships and friendships that I do not have and that my staff does not have. And so if you know legislators particularly well, please let us know. Please tell me, tell Andrew, Mr. Klinger, or tell Mr. Rodriguez, Alejandro. We'll keep a spreadsheet, and when we need to speak to a particular legislator about a specific bill, we might call you for help. That's, that building works on relationships like many buildings. And so that's my first request of you. I want you to be participants in this process, understanding the guardrails that you have set for yourselves. And so please notify us. We'll keep a spreadsheet of when we need to call you in. And then, second, if you do go to Carson City on your own, terrific, good for you, just let us know so that I am not embarrassed in the hallway when someone says to me, hey, your boss is here, and I have to say, which one? I have 13. So all we ask is that you let us know. I ask for that because we are working very hard this session to speak as a system. The Chancellor's Office maintains our Director of Government Relations, Alejandro Rodriguez, and Mr. Klinger is always assigned to go to the Legislature on our behalf because of his great depth of experience there. Every institution also has either a governmental staff, governmental affairs staff person, or an assigned duty. One of our institutions assigns that duty to the President because the staff is small. But we are a large team, and we have eight institutional Presidents, all of whom have relationships and go to Carson City as well, because they, like me, love it there. So what we are working on this session is approaching this work as one system with one voice and a great deal of collaboration. We've already worked together as staff to hold a retreat, and we are working to share space together, to meet every Monday morning at some horrible early morning hour, to talk about what lies ahead of us during the week, and to coordinate with our Presidents. The Presidents met with the Government Affairs Staff this week in my offices and had a good conversation about messaging and approaching the Legislature together. So it's in that spirit of acting like a system that we are approaching this legislative session, and I would ask you to join that as both a corporate board, as a body, and also as individuals, that you participate with us and communicate with us and give us all heads up so that we know what, we each know what the other is doing. So that then brings me to the policy in front of you. And for those playing along on our home version of the game, we are at Section Eight of Chapter One, Title Four, subsection six A. This is the part where, over the last 55 years, the Board has put parameters on the authority of the Chancellor. Remember, the role of the Chancellor is to represent on ENSI matters, this body, before the Legislature. And so what this provision lays out for me, as I get ready to go to Carson City, is sort of two things. If this Board has taken a position, or the language talks about a policy, if there is clear Board policy, then I can take that position. Absent clear policy, or what I am asking for as we go into a couple of these matters, not all, but a couple this session, if you've given me direction as an entity, then I know what I can and cannot say, or what I can say to the Government Affairs Staff and to the Presidents, here's the guardrail, here's what we can and cannot say. So I'll give you a couple examples. Should a legislator introduce a bill saying, "Every agenda item for the Board of Regents, which has a fiscal impact greater than $25,000, shall require a disclaimer to that effect," what would I do? Well, that is existing Board policy. In fact, it's spelled out in title that if we have a fiscal impact, we have to disclose that, and there's a little form where one checks a box when we submit things to the Board Office. And so should a legislator introduce that bill, I could easily go to Carson City and say, correct, we have that policy, we're all in favor of it. Or I could say, that's not necessary, you're reaching into the Board's authority, but I have clear guidance. Make sense? On the other hand, if a legislator were to introduce a bill that, for example, bear with me, the Chancellor must wear green shoes every Tuesday and Thursday and horizontal stripes every Monday and Wednesday and Friday, there is no Board policy on such an issue. There's no Board meeting scheduled, and the bill is up for a hearing. What do I do? Well, that seems to be an overreach of legislative power, and I'm chubby enough, as it is, and look horrible in horizontal stripes, and so I would oppose that legislation. But before I did so, I am required to give you notice. And then I would go to committee and say, this is an intrusion on the Board's power. Look at me, you don't want me in horizontal stripes every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. That's how we would take a position. And I apologize for the frivolous example, but I knew if I picked a real policy issue, it would engender a debate, and Regent Boylan would ask me questions about it. So I'm sticking with something simple like green shoes and horizontal stripes. That's the way this process works. Those are the guidelines you've set for me. It is my job to represent you based on what you have set as policy or told me to do, and that decision then percolates through the Presidents to the Government Affairs Staff as we all work together. And I will do my very best to look to existing policy. If I can't find it, to make a decision, notify you, and then allow the testimony. Well, what if you don't agree with me? You think I look fine in horizontal stripes? Thank you so much. You could, because I have notified you, place that matter on an agenda of a regular meeting or call a special meeting, and redirect me. And so you have not abdicated all of your authority to the Chancellor here. What you've done is made this process smoothly as a corporate entity. And so I think the policy, the policy predates me, the policy was reviewed last fall, and we've left it intact. I think it's wise. I think it's difficult for a corporate Board, corporate body, to speak on every single issue. You can imagine how many times we'd have to call meetings for every bill, and sometimes there isn't time. And so it just makes sense that since 1968, this has been the framework. But as we get into session, I wanted to call it out for you so you know what the rules are. Many of you are new, many of you have not been through a session, and the session you have been through was not really a normal session because it was all virtual. So I wanted us to be clear again, as we are a team, the Board, the Chancellor's Office, the Presidents, and the Government Affairs Staffs, that we are all singing from the same hymnal, if you will, when we go to Carson City. So again, that's the existing policy. If you do know legislators, as Regents, please let us know, and we'll keep a roster. And if you do come to Carson City to speak in your personal capacity or to support us, Regent Ariscotta came and sat in the audience the other day to lend moral support, that's, you're welcome. I just asked that you tell me that you're coming. So, Mr. Chair, that's my overview of this section, this agenda item. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Acting Chancellor?
Yes.
Regent Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was, you mentioned that sometimes things move too quickly, so can you give me a scenario, like what would happen if things are moving, because you know toward the end of the session, everything's moving so quickly? Do you actually have time to notify us? And then what happens then?
Yeah, thank you for that. For the record, Dale Urkiaga, so the Region is correct, at the end, things move very fast, and against deadlines, they move fast. And so I'm bound by the policy. I'm gonna type out an email to say, I'm about to approve an amendment to Assembly Bill 4092, and I just want you to know that. Or I'm about to send Mr. Rodriguez to the table to testify and support our opposition. We will do our very best, even in the end, when things are moving. In the beginning of session, we have more time. In the beginning of session, we have more time. Bills are posted, amendments are printed, and so it's easier for us. And we will make, as we have in previous sessions, regular reports to the Board to keep you apprised. When we get up against committee deadline, House deadline, and final deadline, we'll do our very best to alert you. You may not hear it before it comes out of my mouth in a committee, but my pledge to you is that you'll hear it before it's in the newspaper.
Regent Boylan?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. First, let me say on behalf of the Board, and I couldn't do that, but congratulations on your wee little grandchild. They grow fast, so keep an eye on them. And then they turn out to be crazy. But anyway, I really appreciate it. Like I always say, I'm a simple man, and you gave me a really good example of green shoes and polka dots. I don't know what you said, stripes or something. So that helps me. That really does, simple things like that. And I read the stuff you sent me. I double-checked it, of course, as I always do, and I appreciate your quick response to the last questions I had with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sure. Are there any other questions? Thank you. We appreciate your time. We'll move on as we go through the agenda items. We'll go to number three and hear from our CFO, Andrew Klinger, regarding the Governor's recommended budget.
Thank you, Chair Brooks. Regents, good morning. For the record, Andrew Klinger, Chief Financial Officer. And what I'm going to present this morning to you is what ended up coming out in the Governor's recommended budget. And some of you may have seen at least part of this. I presented this to the Legislative Commission's Budget Subcommittee last week. And just to give you a little bit of sort of background on the process, so the Governor obviously has proposed his budget. It'll go through the various money committees at the Legislature. And so we presented to the Commission's Budget Subcommittee, which is sort of a pre-session activity. Our next presentation in front of the joint Subcommittee meetings will actually happen on February 21st. So that will be our first in-session presentation of the Governor's budget to the Legislature. So I presented this during the, this slide here on all sources of revenue. And again, this is just to give the Board some context, because what we take to the Legislature is really only a portion of our budget. So I won't spend a lot of time on this, because I did talk about this in the meeting we had a couple of weeks ago when we did the onboarding process for Regents. But just overall context, when you look at our budget in total, including all sources of funding, it's over $2 billion. And when we talk about the state operating budget, when we go to Carson City, we're really talking about a little over a billion of that $2 billion budget. So I'm going to skip ahead a little bit. So when you look at the Governor's budget and you compare it to fiscal year '23, and I know there are a lot of numbers on this slide, and I'm sorry, I can't help it, I'm CFO, so that's how I do my slides. But just a few highlights that I would point out on here. So if you look at that FY '23 column, that is the fiscal year that we're in currently. And there's an asterisk up there on that FY '23, and that is that that $691 million number that you see in that column also includes 46.6 million ARP funds that we received from the Legislature two years ago. And I don't want to go through this line by line, but basically, when you look at the FY '24 and '25 columns, each one of those lines adds up to what's in the Governor's budget. And so I'll skip down to the line in green there and just point out the totals and really looking at the percentages. So if you look at what has been proposed in the Governor's budget for FY '24, that is actually 7.3% over what our current budget is, again, including those ARP funds. And then you can see, as you move to the right on that green line, that the FY '25 recommended budget from the Governor is a little less than 1% over FY '24. So this is comparing us to the Governor's budget to FY '23, which is the year we're in. But in fairness, and that's what I do on this slide, is compare the Governor's budget to FY '21. And you might say, "Well, why would you compare to FY '21?" And the reason I do that is because FY '21 was pre-pandemic. It was before budget reductions. So it's a, in my opinion at least, it's a more fair comparison to say, "This is where we were before we ended up with budget cuts." And again, not going through every line on here, but if you just drop down to that green column, what you can see then is that 7.3% change, if you compare to '23, actually drops to a little less than 5%. So in other words, the Governor's proposed budget for '24 is a little over 5% from what we had in FY '21, so essentially three years ago. I think that perspective is important, because you may hear people say, "Oh, you got a 7.3% increase. That's, you know, that's large." But it's like, "Well, wait a minute. You've got to put that in context, and you've got to take that." That is compared to a budget that was already reduced. So now I'm going to jump into some of the components that are contained in the executive budget. And I can do, and I've done it before, and I probably will at some point, I do a whole presentation on the funding formula, and I don't want to do that today, because again, that's a very long, boring, probably, presentation. But I do want to talk about caseload growth, because in this case, there are decision units, what we call decision units or enhancements, in the Governor's budget that offset the impact of this caseload growth. And the way we look at caseload growth in the system is we look at it from a weighted student credit hour perspective. So think of a student credit hour. When a student takes a course, we assign a weight to that depending on the cost of the course. Engineering courses are more expensive than an English 101 course, so they get a higher weight. And what that translates into is what we call weighted student credit hours. That's what the WSCH stands for on the slide. When you're looking at FY '22, WSCH, that's FY '22 weighted student credit hours. So the way the formula works is we compare FY '22 to FY '20. And so what you can see, again, if you just drop down to that green line at the bottom, is in FY '22, we had 3,29,146 weighted student credit hours. If you compare that to what we had in the column to the right, or fiscal '20, we actually had 93,000 less weighted student credit hours. The reason for that is obviously due to the impact of the pandemic and declining enrollment as a result of that. So as you look at this slide, the numbers in red are those institutions that actually have decreases in weighted student credit hours. And the way the funding formula works is, when it's going up, the state gives you more money. When it's going down, they actually take money away. So in this case, this decrease in weighted student credit hours generates negative, what I would call negative decision units in the budget, that actually take money away from the institutions. Now, this is one small piece of the funding formula, and there are other adjustments that get made that are not shown here. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to show you to them, show them to you. But as I go through it, I'll talk about, we do have an enhancement in here that the Governor recommended to offset some of these reductions that we're looking at here on this slide. So let me talk about the enhancements. The first, and this was the Board's number-one priority, is the restoration of the budget cuts. So again, this goes back to, as we look at the current year that we're in, the Legislature two years ago partially restored our budget cuts, and they did that with the ARP funding, but they still left some cuts in there. So what this funding does, the 37. almost 4 million a year, is it restores the institutions to pre-pandemic levels. So it eliminates those cuts that have been in those budgets from over the last two years, so $74.7 million. And this funding is important for the institutions, because they currently are either holding positions vacant, or there's activities that they are not doing that they need to get this funding restored, so they can return to more normal operations. The next one is the DRI Funding Formula Revision. So in 2015, there was an adjustment to the DRI Funding Formula, and that Funding Formula was then tied to, basically to grants and contracts. So as the level of grants and contracts grew, state funding would grow as well. But again, just like the Funding Formula that I just went through on the prior page, the opposite is true as well. As grants and contracts went down, they lost funding. And so what this ended up doing to Desert Research Institute is it sort of became this spiral, because the grants and contracts fluctuate, and there's variations in there. So they would lose their grants and contract money. They would lose their indirect cost as part of that, and then they would also lose state funding. So what this recommendation from the Governor does is it restores DRI back to their old way of doing business, which is essentially the model that the state uses. It's called a base, maintenance, and enhancement model, and decouples from the grant funding level that they have currently today. And so the two decision units that you see on there, E125 and E126, and that E125 and 126, just for those that don't know, those are, that's just the methodology that the state uses as they label these things. It's considered an enhancement, and they assign various numbers to them. So they're really, nothing else other than a label applied by the Governor's Finance Office. So E125 and E126 help restore DRI both from positions and from an operating and maintenance budget back to pre-formula levels. So these are essentially the reductions that they have experienced because of the new Funding Formula since 2015. And what this does is restore them back to those prior levels. Next item is graduate teaching assistance for UNLV and for UNR. And there's two components to this for both institutions. There's an increase in stipends, and there's also an increase in the number of positions. And so this is for graduate teaching assistance for those in master's program as well as doctoral. And so on the master's side, for UNR, the stipend increases from $15,000 a year to $16,000 a year. And for UNLV, it goes up from $11,250 to $14,125. And for doctoral students, that stipend increase is $2,000. For UNLV, this would add 66 additional teaching assistant positions. And for UNR, it represents a 25% increase. Next is summer courses for teachers. So historically, institutions do not receive state funding for summer school courses. Summer school courses are what we call a self-supporting activity, so they are supported solely on student fees. There is one exception to that currently, and that is nursing. About 20 years ago, because we had a nursing shortage, we went to the Legislature and asked for additional state funding for summer courses to help speed up the process of graduating nurses. And so we are proposing a similar, we have a similar proposal here for teachers. So for each of the institutions with these funds, they would be able to increase essentially the speed at which they can graduate teachers who are in a teaching program. It will also enable existing teachers to come back and take summer courses to get advanced degrees as well. So this is a recommendation from the Governor to help do something to begin to alleviate the teacher shortage that we are experiencing as a state. I talked about the caseload growth on the slide and the numbers in red and those institutions that were impacted. This is how we offset that here. The Governor has included a one-shot in his budget to fund what we are calling enrollment recovery for CSN, TMCC, and GBC. You can see, over the course of the two years, it's $12.5 million. And what this will allow the institutions to do is to continue to maintain the level of faculty and services that they have while that enrollment recovers. You can imagine the impact if CSN, for example, had to cut almost $6 million out of their annual budget. Like most budgets, about 80% or more of that is faculty and staff, so that would be a huge impact. So this will allow the institution to sort of stabilize while that enrollment recovers. Next is the UNR at Lake Tahoe Transition One Shot. As SNU became part of UNR last year, the weighted student credit hours for SNU, because they were not part of UNR in fiscal '22, were not counted in the Funding Formula. So what this does is it recognizes those weighted student credit hours for SNU students who have enrolled in the fall for UNR. And so this funding will sort of, it's a formula adjustment, if you will, for UNR. So the Governor has included $1.6 million in his budget for that purpose. Couple of other one-shot requests that have been included in the Governor's budget related to NevadaNet. First is $3 million for renewal of dark fiber leases. The second is one-time funding for equipment that supports NevadaNet. The description there says NevadaNet, but also that $5 million does also include money for, or funding for servers for PeopleSoft, for example, which is our student information system. So it's not just NevadaNet. It goes a little bit beyond NevadaNet, but $8 million in one-shot funding to essentially support technology within the system. And then capital improvement projects. So we have three capital improvement projects that are included in the Governor's budget. The first one on there is what we call, it's the Higher Education Capital Construction and Special Higher Education Capital Construction. You might hear me say HECK, Sheck. That's what that stands for. And this funding is for deferred maintenance. It's $15 million every two years. This has been a, it's in statute, and so this has been a standard amount for decades that we receive. It's, obviously, you can imagine, we have grown quite a bit over the last few decades. And so you'll see, as I get to the one at the bottom, we've asked for additional funding for deferred maintenance. The second one on the list is a chilled water replacement at DRI in northern Nevada. And then the last one is that additional deferred maintenance that I talked about. This would take that $15 million and bring it to $65 million. And like I said, that $15 million number has been around probably since at least the '70s, and we've grown quite a bit since then. So we put forth a request for additional deferred maintenance. That $50 million was our top priority on the capital improvement list. And as we've worked with the institutions, we've identified over $91 million worth of what we call Tier 1 projects. So these are projects that are critical within the next two years. So this $15 million is critical to the institutions. I put this slide on here. Some of these dollars are not included in our budget, but they're obviously important to us as an organization. The Silver State Opportunity Grant, that budget is included within the inchi budgets. It's $5 million a year or $10 million. The Nevada Promise actually is housed in the Nevada Treasurer's Office, but there is a one-shot included in the Governor's budget for $6 million to continue to support that program. And then obviously, I think we're all familiar with the Governor-Gwen Millennium Scholarship Program. Again, that's a program that's actually housed in the Treasurer's Office, but the Governor's budget does include $75 million for the Millennium Scholarship Program. And then workforce and economic development funds, we did We did include in our recommendation to the governor a request for $12 million a year in workforce and economic development funding. We had actually allocated that fundee directly to the institution, so directly to Nevada State College and the community colleges. What the governor has proposed is slightly different. The dollars are the same, but what the governor is proposing is that those, that $12 million per year go into what we call the WIN Fund, Workforce Innovations for the New Nevada. And the institutions will have to apply for those funds. So the amount, I should say, is not guaranteed for the institutions. You have to present a plan. You have to present metrics for outcomes. And so they will have to go through that application process that is outlined in NRS. UNLV School of Medicine Increase, another one-shot that's included in the governor's budget that we had recommended, $9.2 million in total, which will allow the UNLV School of Medicine to increase the operating costs as their new medical education building opens, as well as increasing faculty and staff to prepare for the expansion of the class size in the future. And so this is critical funding as the medical school moves into their new facility. And then lastly, is the governor's budget included $5 million for an interim Funding Formula study. It's been a little over a decade since we have studied the current formula. And so the governor is recommending this funding here to take a look at our current Funding Formula. A lot has changed since we did the Funding Formula a decade ago. And so this would do that. In our conversations with the governor's office, $5 million is a lot of money. And I think their intent is that the funding would not only be used to look at a Funding Formula, but look at other studies as far as operational efficiencies and other things at INCHE as well. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions? Regent Boylan?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Great presentation, Mr. Klinger. It made so much sense to me that I've got questions now. And that's dangerous. Because the first thing you said was that increase of 7%. Could you explain that one again? It was like five slides back.
Sure.
Increase. That sounds awesome to me.
Yeah, so just if you look at, I'll go back to the slide. Thank you for bringing those up. If you look at our overall... Oops, I went too far. Sorry.
You did say it was compared to something in '21 or something.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Oh, my gosh.
Let's just go to the first one and start all over.
There we go. It was there. Yes. There we go. One more back. So what I'm looking at here, so if you look at that first column, if you look at the top, FY '23. And so if you see the number there, $691 million. So that is, that is the resources that the state has given us for the current fiscal year that we're in. And in this case, it does include $46.6 million in ARP funds. So it's, normally, it would just be state funds, but because of cuts and ARP funds, they backfilled part of it. So it's $691 million. The next line over, if you look at that green line, is $742 million. That's what the governor has recommended for next fiscal year, which is what the governor's recommended budget is budgeting for. And that is a, that $742 million is a 7.3% increase over the current budget that we are currently operating under, or that $691 million. So that's what that means. And the next slide that I talked about, and the reason I did this is just because we've taken budget cuts. And so I did also did a comparison. And in addition to comparing to FY '23, I did a comparison to FY '21, which is a comparison that is pre-pandemic, pre-cuts. And so again, if you go to the bottom there for FY '21, you see a budget of $707 million. And if you go over to the right at FY '24, that's $742, same number, but it's comparing to a bigger number because that bigger number is pre-cuts, or it's a 4.9% increase compared to pre-cuts. So hopefully, that helps.
Okay, that's great. I always liked Joe, and he's given us more money. That's a good sign. But I do have a couple more questions, Mr. Chair. If that's okay with you? Yep. Thanks, Mr. Klinger. The other thing you mentioned, and I got a wee bit confused, negative weighted, they lose funding?
Yes.
And what's, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
And I'm paying, you know, like the professor said back there. I am paying attention, looking at you. So if I look down here, I'm just writing questions for you. So go ahead.
No, it's a great question. So what you're talking about is this slide here. And so it's similar to what other state agencies have as caseload growth, right? So for K-12, they project, they say, we have 410,000 students today, and we think we're going to have 415,000 students in the next year. So they do what they call a caseload projection. Ours is a little bit different in that we don't do a projection. We actually do a look back. So we take a snapshot in FY '22 of what we call weighted student credit hours. So what's the total weighted student credit hours across the system? And then we compare that to what was done in FY '20. And in this case, because we had enrollment declines due to the pandemic in '22 compared to '20, we actually had less weighted student credit hours. And the reason the weighted student credit hours are important is because that is the driver that the state uses when they do our Funding Formula calculation. So in this case, institutions, and you can see the numbers in red there, the institutions with the numbers in red, because they saw a decrease in the number of weighted student credit hours, the state actually would, normally, would take that money away. Now, as I went through it, you could see we have a request in there, and the governor included it in his budget to essentially backfill that funding so that they don't lose, so that they don't lose that funding.
Thank you. That was great. One last question for Mr. Klinger. And then I might address Dr. Etamizian, if he's here. I thought he is. And I challenge anyone on the board to say his name correctly, but I think I've got it down. But, Mr. Klinger, why is the funding difference in graduate teaching assistance for Reno and for UNLV? Why is there, why do we do it differently? Do you know? Or should I ask?
Well, I think the, if I might, Mr. Chairman, for the record, CFO Klinger, I think the difference is they are at different starting points. So if we talk about master's students, so the current stipend at UNR is $15,000. The current stipend at UNLV is $11,250. So there's a larger increase in the stipend at UNLV. It goes up to $14,125. UNR is still a little bit ahead. They've closed the gap there a little bit, but UNR is at $16,000. So there's currently a disparity in the stipends, and this brings them a little bit closer. But there is a larger increase in that stipend at UNLV.
That's my question. Why is there a difference? Why do we do that to GTA's up there and, you know, pay less? You know, why? Do you know? Or is that a board thing? Or presidential thing? Or what is, is there a reason why?
Yeah, and I would defer to the presidents on that. And, yeah, because I don't know the answer to that. Why, why that disparity exists currently? I don't know the answer to that.
So maybe Mr. Whitfield, President, is here so he can tell us a wee bit. Am I on? Oh, yeah. Sorry.
You're on. And thank you, CFO Klinger, for the fun question to ask. I think that this is embedded in history. And it's in part, when you look at it, I want to say that this may go back even 10 years, that UNLV's stipend amount did not keep up with the pace that was changing at UNR. And other than that, I can't tell you the reasoning or the rationale for it, but it just didn't keep up with it. And so then you see this large differential. And so this is a very, very important piece for parity for students. You know, I don't even think it was based on differences in cost of living or whatever. I cannot figure out why there was less. We have a smaller number, and we had a smaller number. And that, those programs have grown over time. But that still doesn't necessarily answer your question as to why was there such a difference to begin with. But this is a great step towards trying to achieve parity.
Thank you, President Whitfield. And is it something the board did, our policy? You know, we can, don't worry. No, I'm not asking you. I'm just talking out loud. Thank you so much. So the last question, Mr. Chair, was to Dr. Etamizian. Anybody else want to try that name? But where is this chilled water central plant? Why do you need chilled water up north? It's already cold. I don't know.
Regent Boylan, Chair. So my understanding is that the chilled water is essentially actually part of the overall HVAC system for the building. And you need the chilled water in order to balance.
Speak up closer, Mr. Etamizian, please.
Yes. So going back one point before that, you pronounced my name very well, Regent Boylan.
Didn't I? Awesome.
So the chilled water system is essentially part of the overall HVAC system. It regulates the temperature in the buildings in our northern Nevada facility. And you need the chilled water to balance the hot air as to how these industrial systems work, is my understanding.
Oh, I see. So it's just a matter of HVAC thing. So we have it here also. It's not that it's, I'm like, who's getting this money? Because it sounds kind of fishy to me. I'm like, hey, it's cold up north and chilled water. Aye, aye, aye. There's something wrong here. Thank you so much, Mr. Klinger, Dr. Etamizian, and President Whitfield. Sir, thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, gentlemen. Regent McMichael, you have a question?
Yes. My question is about the Silver State Opportunity Grant, Nevada Promise, and the Millennium Scholarship. Are these funds 100% utilized during that fiscal year? Or do they carry over? Because we don't have enough qualified candidates that can utilize this opportunity.
For the record, CFO Klinger, they do carry over if they don't utilize all of them. And in fact, the numbers that are presented for both Nevada Promise, and I wasn't, you know, involved in the Millennium Scholarship, but that's based on projections taking into account what has ended up carrying forward previously.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Regent Goodman?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering, are there any ARPA funds included in the fiscal year 2024 budget? I know you mentioned it there, including the '23.
Yeah, that's a good question. For the record, CFO Klinger, so they're not included in the governor's budget. They end up on sort of that other side of the ledger, if you will, on the self-supporting side. And the institutions do still have some of those funds. So those, some of those funds are, I mean, they've been allocated, but some of those funds are still available, but they're not reflected in the governor's budget. But they are in there.
Thank you. I have one more comment.
Sure, go ahead, Regent Goodman.
I do look forward to our graduate students here making the same amount as in UNR. So just want to put that on the record.
And, Mr. Chairman, the only other comment that I would make, and I don't have a slide for it, but I do want to at least recognize it, is that the governor's budget does include cost of living adjustments for all employees. So it's 8% in the first year and 4% in the second year. And I've had conversations with the governor's Finance Office. This does include all of the INCHE employees, classified and professional are included in that. The other compensation piece that's included in the governor's budget is the $2,000 a year retention payment. And I also confirmed with the governor's Finance Office that that does also include INCHE professional and classified as well. So both of those, I don't have numbers specific to INCHE, but those are included in the governor's budget.
Thank you. I think that's important to note. I do have one question for you regarding the graduate teaching assistant stipends. For some reason, I'm telling you, this thing is still in my head, right? From some of the things that we've heard from those students. When we talk about the numbers at UNLV, that there would be an availability to increase 66 students. And then when we talked about that, the increase at UNR, it was 25%. I don't know the number of, can you, do you have any idea what that number is? I get the 25%, but is there a number to correlate with that 25%?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, CFO Klinger, there is. And I don't know what it is off the top of my head. And I don't know if perhaps the VP of Finance for UNR is in Reno and can give us that number? Because I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Good morning, if I may, Chair. Vic Redding, Vice President, Administration of Finance for the University of Nevada Reno. It is a total of 88 new GTA lines. And you'll see the way the governor's budget has that stepped up. It's 44 the first year, and then 88 the second year. And that is the number that continues. And there's some practical application behind the reason that stepped up. Our ability to recruit the high-quality graduate students on very short notice, 44 is achievable. And then an additional 44 the next year.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I would imagine that with the increase that as campuses are taking a look at bringing in more graduate teaching assistants, that they are ensuring that those who already are doing it, right, are getting that stipend increase that's necessary for cost of living. And that by bringing in more students to be part of this doesn't stifle the ability for current graduate students' teaching assistants to meet the needs of the economic increase in terms of cost of living.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, for the record, that is correct. And the new graduate teaching assistant positions that are coming in are coming in at the higher stipend amount.
Thank you. We appreciate the presentation. I don't think there are any more questions. And, no, I'm sorry. Regent Goodman?
Thank you, Chair. I'm talkative today. But I do think it's important to acknowledge the governor giving us these funds and doing what he did. It's obvious that education is important. And I'm grateful to see us going back to those pre-pandemic numbers plus. It's wonderful that this team and the governor's team put this together. It's a very robust budget for higher education, and I'm hoping that this goes through. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Goodman.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Regent Tarkanian.
I just wanted to comment on the fact that we have several people, or several regions, who have questioned the difference between the salary for graduate assistants at UNR and UNLV. Could we please have someone bring to our board the rationale behind that? Sometimes we have these feelings, and then they get lost. And I just feel that if the workload is the same, what's expected is the same, there should be a very good reason why the financial remuneration is not the same.
I think that's a great idea, Regent Tarkanian, and certainly something we can bring up in new business to ensure that it gets placed on agenda and is brought forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again for the presentation. We're going to take a 10-minute administrative break. We're going to take a 10-minute administrative break. So we'll see you back here in 10 minutes. Thank you. We're going to resume at this point. And I would ask that Chancellor Dale Urkiagua come up to the podium for a presentation. However, Chancellor, prior to you speaking, what I'd like to do is give Regent Downs an opportunity for a disclaimer prior to this conversation that we're going to have. Regent Downs?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brooks. Pursuant to NRS Chapter 281A, I hereby disclose that I am an employee of the state of Nevada. Because the independence of judgment of a reasonable person would not be materially affected by my situation, I will vote on this matter.
Thank you, Regent Downs. I believe we may have one more. Regent Brager?
State that I'm here for the record and that I did listen to the meeting. I did have a, I chair the Governor's Workforce Childcare Development Committee, and it was our last meeting today, so I apologize. This is important, but that's going to the legislature, so I had to make sure we completed it.
Got it. Thank you for being here, Regent. Chancellor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Dale Urkiaga, Acting Chancellor. So this agenda item is designed to provide the board the opportunity to set those guardrails that I discussed in my prior presentation. But that comes with a couple of caveats. First, it is unusual for us to post a list like this. And given the open meeting law, this list binds us. So this was the best list we could put together, knowing what we know today. I apologize that there are 13 items. My very superstitious maternal grandmother would not forgive me for putting 13 things on a page. But these were the things that are the most present in the conversation today. But if it's not on this list, please don't bring up Senate Bill 5 that has been prefilled, because we won't be able to talk about it. We have future opportunities to talk about other legislation. You have other board meetings or my previous presentation, the policy will kick in. So there's a little bit of guardrail here, and I apologize for that. We did, this is not an exhaustive list. Also, on this list, there are some concepts. I'm not going to ask you to vote on concepts. I'm looking for board questions, board consensus, some board guidance as I navigate this world ahead. And even where we have a bill or where a bill draft exists, I would caution us, bills change. And so you may cast a vote today if I ask you to do so and you agree on a particular item. That item might be amended and it might mean something completely different. That does happen in my day, early days in the legislative process. It was called a legmatic, when a bill would be turned into something completely different than its sponsor intended. So a little bit of caution. There are a couple of things here where I very much need clear guidance, likely a vote. And I'll be very clear about that. And then there are some things that are here that are not yet ripe for a vote, if I can use that legal term. We don't yet know what the bill drafting office will do with an idea. And so let me use that as a jumping off point to talk about a central tenet of the Nevada system of higher education representing itself at the Nevada Legislature. The board is aware that the Constitution of Nevada creates a Board of Regents and gives it charge for the control over the university, which, as you all know, has been a complicated and broadly defined term. But you have, you as a board entity, have and have had, since the Constitution was written, a very distinct carve-out. And so over the years, particularly in the last 60 years, my lifetime, the lawyers for the system have established parameters for what is within the control of the Board of Regents and what is, must fall to the legislature to, as the Constitution says, prescribe the duties of the Board of Regents. And so as a practical matter for me, as I have to be your representative, I look at these issues as, is this proposed legislation prescribing a duty for the board? To use my previous example, the board shall adopt a policy requiring the chancellor to wear unflattering horizontal stripes. That's the legislature directing you. It is prescribing a duty to you. If the bill says the chancellor shall wear unflattering horizontal stripes, timeout. Your legislature have infringed upon the board's authority under the Constitution. It gets messy. It gets agitated sometimes. It is a tug-of-war conversation. But so as we go through some of these items, keep that in mind. There is a balance that I have to, as your representative, walk this line of. Is the legislature crossing into your authority? Or is the legislature prescribing to you a duty? Right? So with that preface, I am not going to propose, Mr. Chair, that I walk you through all unlucky 13 items. I will tell you, if you wouldn't mind, if you have this document or if you would like to make notes, those where I'd like some very clear guidance before the clock runs out. Item number two, Assembly Bill 37, as you have heard, I asked for that guidance because it includes a fiscal note that is not in the governor's budget. Item number three, the subject of fee waivers. And I can't ask you to vote here, because I don't know what the fee waiver bills look like yet, but I will need some consensus of the board, I think. Item number seven, the board's constitutional authority, as I have just discussed it. And that is not an area in which this board has prescribed a policy for me, and I would not presume to assume a position. And item number eight, to reduce the number and terms of the Board of Regents. Again, this board has not opined on that subject, and I wouldn't presume. So, Mr. Chair, those are my four that I really would like some very clear guidance. But I am happy to discuss any of these items with you, hear your questions, defer those that I can't answer to Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Klinger, and go from there. So I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chair, how you would like to proceed.
So I think what would be most appropriate would be to address those items that you have outlined, the four that you have outlined, as needing some attention today. And then go from there, once we have those four items solidified.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Dale Urkiaga. So Assembly Bill 37, as you've heard from, in public comment, authorizes the creation of a center at INCHE, and is a Center for Workforce and Behavioral Health Workforce Development. It's a model from Nebraska. It is, was brought to the Rural Behavioral Health Policy Board, which is an entity created by the legislature by members of our own staff from UNR and UNLV. They graciously came to me and said, we're proposing a bill that creates a center in your institution. Will you help us get the bill draft right? Which we did during the interim. And now there is a bill. And that bill will require a fiscal note be attached. We have already been asked. This is a new center. It is an unfunded center. And so we'll put a fiscal note to it. And so I would represent to this body, you have told me clearly in the seven months I have been your acting chancellor, that mental and behavioral health issues are a priority for you. You have heard from prior speakers why that is important. You have heard me say why that is important. And so I believe that this is within our wheelhouse. We need to contribute to that workforce because of the need within our campuses and within our state. But I wish to verify that with you because of the fiscal impact.
Thank you, Chancellors. Just for the record, Chair Brooks, so I think one of the things that's important to note in this is that this really has more to do with workforce development than it does with health and welfare of a student who is on campus seeking a center for relief. Although, what this can turn into pretty effectively is beginning with that workforce process of being able to attract folks to a specific program regarding behavioral health. And at the same time, as students are moving through this program, much like there are internships in different areas or rotations in areas, that it could be, it could be a place where students do receive relief and some additional support and guidance. So I just wanted to make those clarifications clear as we open up a discussion, just so that we can provide some type of general consensus to the chancellor in terms of what the will of the board is regarding this specific item. And I will call upon my fellow regents. Regent Boylan?
Thanks, Chair. I appreciate that. You mentioned, Mr. Chancellor, that it was unfunded. All right. So then I guess I'll have to bounce to Mr. Klinger from there. So if it's unfunded, where do we get the money from? Or where do we come up with the money? Do we steal from Peter to give to Paul? I mean, this is an important topic, and I'm all in favor of it. But where does the money come from?
For the record, Dale Urkiaga, thank you for the question, Regent Boylan. So in, with a bill like this that has a fiscal impact, the bill is introduced and it is noted that has fiscal impact. And so we have been asked to attach what's called a fiscal note. It's a budget, essentially, to run this center that is attached to the bill. And so procedurally, a bill is heard in a, this bill would likely be heard in a, what's called a policy committee. We want a center like this, probably would go to the Committee on Education. Oh, it has a fiscal note. This bill will be re-refered to one of the money committees, Senate Finance, Assembly Ways and Means. Those entities would add the fiscal note, the money for the fiscal note, assuming they have it, and then the bill could move. It would be a special appropriation to the INCHE budget. Absent that, it will pass and say the board shall establish the center insofar as funding is available. We would have to seek a grant to establish a center in such a matter. Or you could direct me to, in your words, take from Peter to pay Paul.
Right. Thank you. It makes sense. Thank you.
Sure. Are there any other comments or questions for the chancellor regarding the Assembly Bill 37 item? Is there a? Regent Brown, you have a question or comment?
I do. Thank you so much, Regent Brown, for the record. I was looking over the supplemental information that was given. And when it got down to Section 6, it mentioned that the center would happen at an institution or multiple institutions. And then when you get down to 3A, it says that there'll be a main one and then regional hubs. Do we have any indication of where this main hub is proposed to be located?
Thank you, Regent Brown, for the record, Dale Urkiaga. Yes, UNLV has taken the lead in this matter. As I said, UNR has assisted, and I think some of the other institutions have contributed. But it is my understanding that the main hub would be at UNLV where this idea had its genesis.
That's wonderful. And then we can expect regional hubs in the north to, for, and then maybe even in the rurals. We can expect that if we get the funding. Is that right?
For the record, Dale Urkiaga, that's how the model works in other places.
Okay. Amazing. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions or comments? Regent Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to comment, this is long overdue, and I'm in full support of going forward with the Assembly Bill 37. And it's a great way to keep our, its mental health experts within our state and give them an opportunity to hone their skills.
Thank you. Regent Goodman?
I would just like to make a comment. I run the largest problem gambling center here in Nevada. And all I can say is, whether it's for workforce development or it's for getting our students the help that they need, I think that this is imperative. And how wonderful that we, you know, it's proposed that we have the main hub here at UNLV. But it is essential that we get into some of those rural areas, especially places like Elko, Great Basin, those areas, Truckee Meadow. We just need to really be in a space where we're providing this kind of help to everyone.
Thank you, Regent Goodman. Regent Boylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Will this be open to the public, to anybody, or is it just for students? Just curious if you know that.
For the record, Dale Urkiaga, it's my understanding that because this is a workforce development center, it would be less of a service center, as the chair has said. So it's not for me to walk in to receive mental and behavioral health services. It's a workforce development program. So while there might be some students or staff available for some limited hours, this is about creating more professionals, not a direct service. And if I'm wrong and someone in the audience wants to run up here and tap me on the shoulder, they will do so.
All right. Good. Thank you, sir.
Chair Brooks, for the record, so I think another way of saying that is, this essentially is being built as a pipeline, so that we have those who want to have these awards in specific areas of behavioral health to be able to then contribute to the economy here in Nevada.
For the record, Dale Urkiaga, pipeline is a good word, sir.
Thank you. It seems to me like I haven't heard any questions that would, that would give me the idea that a regent is not in favor of this. But just for the record, I want to ask, is there any regent who has additional questions or who is not in favor of our chancellor being able to express in communication processes to the legislative body that we are in support of this item? There is nobody disagreeing. And so I would offer that, the board's in consensus that you would be able to communicate this and move forward, and we appreciate that. At that, maybe that was too quick. Regent Goodman?
I just want to know, do we need to make any kind of formal motion for just?
You certainly may, but consensus is okay with me, because that was very clear.
Thank you.
It might not always be that clear. I started with an easy one.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Regent Goodman, because that was a good point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. And again, I want to recognize the folks from our institution, some of whom are behind me. They want to wave. Some might be in their Reno office as well. And of course, the Rural Behavioral Health Policy Board for thinking of this and offering it at INCHE. So I did start with an easy one. Item number three, student fee waivers, is a slightly less easy topic. Many years ago, the legislature prescribed the duty to the board and originally prescribed money for a student we favor, we favor, fee, I'm sounding like you with the word "we", Regent Boylan, a fee waiver for members of the National Guard. And so that's the oldest fee waiver in our system. Some years later, during the tenure of former Chancellor O'Reilly, this board added a fee waiver for foster youth. And other fee waivers have been added legislatively in the ensuing decade or so. The money went away, and so, from the legislature. And so what we have today is a system of fee waivers where a student of a certain population group is absolved from paying certain fees in our institutions. Well, the cost remains. And so what happens is institutions have to allocate monies from other students. Remember our budgeting, we only get money from the legislature and from students. If the legislature doesn't give us money and we have a hole in our budget, that means those costs are spread to the other students. Regardless, fee waivers are becoming an increasing topic at the legislature. I have been informed of a couple pieces of legislation, one to make changes to an existing fee waiver, one to propose a new fee waiver. And over the years, the central office, the chancellor's office, has taken a pretty hands-off position here. Fee waivers take money without support. Because of this board's clear emphasis on access for all and a diverse and inclusive campus, I am looking to policy less inclined to say, no, 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 no. I am more inclined to look for ways to make those fee waivers for special populations work. Well, the way they work is if the legislature creates an appropriation. The legislature could, as they have done in the matter of the Silver State Opportunity Grant or the Nevada Promise Scholarship, set aside monies either here at INCHE or in the State Treasurer's Office, and we could apply to be reimbursed for those fees that were expended. That, for me, is the best policy outcome. But it's an area where I need guidance, and this one I would not ask you to vote on likely because it's, we're talking about, well, what if, stale. But I'd like to hear the sense of the board. Are you vehemently opposed to fee waivers? Are you in favor of fee waivers if we get money? Do you wish to pick and choose among student types? That's my question for the board, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chancellor. So just a quick question that I have, and this would not affect any current policy regarding fee waivers that institutions provide. Like you had suggested, there are, in fact, it was, I think, last legislative session, we talked about different fee waivers for military personnel. And so I'm just, just for clarification, I want to make sure that And so I'm just, just for clarification, I want to make sure that this is not addressing previous fee waivers, this is addressing new fee waivers.
Thank you for the question. For the record, Taylor Kiaga, respectfully, no, sir. They could amend an existing fee waiver, and there is in fact a proposal to do that, to broaden the fee waiver for Native Americans. They could also introduce a bill for a new youth population. So it is both making an existing fee waiver broader and creating a new population group, respectfully, sir.
Thank you. I think broader is better than cancel, right? In terms of the fee waivers themselves. So we're not looking at the potential for a fee waiver that has been provided to National Guard who are getting a waiver because of recruitment, re-enlistment, I should say, not recruitment. That would still remain in effect, although it could be broader, which would be fantastic for those serving, but it would not omit that. Is that correct?
That's, for the record, Taylor Kiaga, thank you for, I apologize. Yeah, I'm not aware of any bill that would limit existing fee waivers or eliminate them. I apologize, sir.
Thank you, Chancellor. No, I appreciate that. Regent Breger has a question.
Susan Breger, for the record. Do you have an estimate of what we've had to pay in the past for those waivers?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Regent Breger, thank you for the softball question. I know the answer here, and I don't even have to ask Andrew. In the last financial report that was prepared for the board, it was $3.6 million across all the fee waivers. And I think there are five. The largest is that for the National Guard.
So is this, if I can, may I ask another question? Is this something like Public Ed Foundation, that there could be a scholarship form for those fee waivers so we could supplement the money if the legislature does something to challenge us on that?
For the record, Taylor Kiaga, so yes, the board could set aside monies to sort of scholarship back to the institution. The institution literally forgoes the revenue. They don't collect it. And so the board could set aside monies to reimburse, or the legislature could set aside monies to reimburse the institution. I think that is the better public policy.
And I agree. Not that I need to agree, but I mean, I feel like we want to make sure we don't, the goal of what I'm hearing from this whole board is to make sure people, students, can be educated. And if we put any, you know, walls up and we don't know that, then that would be a challenge. So I appreciate how you've covered this, and if it's approximately 3.6 million, making sure that we can get it back so we can keep supplementing others that may be there because it would be challenging to know exactly that amount. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Regent Breger.
Thank you. Regent Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you answered it already. How many fee waivers do we have right now?
Ma'am, I believe, for the record, Taylor Kiaga, I believe there are five, and there are a number in the military category, two or three Native Americans foster use.
Understood. And?
Somewhere that my financial aid team is hemorrhaging that I'm wrong, so.
So that, okay. What is the expectation that those numbers will grow? Like, I mean, today it is 3-point-something million, but in two years, will it be, what is the estimate that that will cost?
For the record, Taylor Kiaga, to the Chair, to Regent Perkins, that's a really good question. Part of the, I'll use the Native American fee waiver as an example. I attended a meeting at the University of Nevada Reno, widely attended by members of Nevada's 27, I think, recognized tribes. Our institutions make varying levels of use in how they recruit Native American students. Some have an indigenous position dedicated, and so they're pretty good at recruiting students from the indigenous population. Others don't have that, and so students are unaware. So the more we publicize, or the tribes publicize, that waiver, the more it will grow. And that is, in my view, good. That's an access mission. And also in my view, that is something we should project, and we got some pretty good numbers from the representatives there about what that ultimate universe looks like. I think that is on us to be able to say to the legislature, we really wish to do this, and here's where we think this might go. And if you add a new population group, here's where we think that might go. I think that's important.
I think, I think I agree with Regent Breger is that a way to make it sustainable is to have the funding from the legislature or some form of reimbursement to the institutions because it seems like it could get pretty wieldy very quickly.
Understood. Thank you.
Regent Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record. I would like to share the, as a member of the Nevada National Guard, the profile of someone from the National Guard that is accepting those fee waivers. So as I met with institutions to discuss this and within recruiting with the Guard, we use it as a recruitment tool to get the best and brightest applicants. And the Guard members that are attending our state universities have some of the highest graduation rates and typically go into service fields that are high need, like medical and mental health. So I just wanted to share the impact that it has on us as a society that pays dividends far beyond $3.6 million that we are utilizing for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Regent Boylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions here, quick ones. Now, I'm out of touch, and maybe you, Mr. Chair, or Regent Shelley Cruz, or even my friend here, Mr. McMichaels, could answer this for me. I'm out of touch, but is there something still going on, like the GI Bill? Yes?
Chair Brooks, for the record, yes. In fact, that bill's been enhanced.
All right. So if we have the GI Bill, then why are we waiving fees for, let's say, the National Guard or anybody else? We get the money from there, right? Mr. Chancellor or someone else who can, if we do have this going, why do we have a fee waiver? We just get it from the GI Bill. So what, how does this work? And I'm sure there's a few who don't understand this, so, and they won't ask, but I'm going to ask.
Chair, Chair Brooks, for the record. I apologize. I wanted to make sure you got everything out before I jumped in. There's a distinction between somebody who's in the National Guard and somebody who has served their military contract and has now, is no longer in military service, and those individuals are now seeking education. And so there's a distinction between somebody who is actively involved with the National Guard currently as we sit and somebody who has served a four, eight, 12, whatever that contract is. They have finished their military service, and now they're looking at education. That's where that GI Bill would come into play for those who have left military service, essentially.
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Chair. So then we would get some money back from the GI Bill, or they'd pay for it. Okay. But it's, this is more for recruitment, and I still find that interesting, but it's good. The other question, are fee waivers funded by the legislature? We're talking about all this, I'd rather get the money upfront than spend it and say, hey, guy, give me the money back now. Because then you've got to hunt them down and say, where's my money? So, you know, can we get it upfront?
For the record, Taylor Kiaga, so today, fee waivers are not funded by the legislature. We absorb the cost of a fee waiver at the institution. What I'm hearing, the sense of this board is, yes, access is important, to sustainability is important, and so in my view, the legislature establishing a pool of funds, scholarship funds, that could be used to offset these costs is a preferred policy outcome. To your point, I get the money, I know the money's there. When I expend it, I get it.
Oh, that's nice to know that we get it. Couple more. Is that, yeah, I did that one. Do we have a number for how many students who get free waivers? You know, do we have a nice graph, Gantt chart, something? Get through college? Or do, or they just spend the money? Because I know easy come is easy go. You give me free money, boom, bada bing, it's gone in a while, whether I achieve anything or not. So how many of those free students, and I don't mean this lightly, free fee waiver students get through college? What are we doing? Or is this just a political stunt that we want to show, oh, hey, we're doing something, and we're really nice guys, we're giving people free things, and they'll vote for us? Nah, that doesn't sound good to me. So how many do we have, something like that?
For the record, Taylor, for the record, Taylor Kiaga, so I have not seen in my time here a longitudinal analysis of persistence or completion, is what you're asking. I have seen numbers, and a report was provided to the board in September of the number of students, but I have not seen an analysis of efficacy, persistence, and completion, to your point, getting through to the end.
That, you're a wordsmith, and I like the words you use. It's awesome. I like it. And is that possible? Could we get a report like that before we make this decision, or we have to make this decision today? Is that what it is?
For the record, Taylor Kiaga, so no, that's not possible to get in any quick amount of time. That kind of data analysis, it requires a longitudinal tracking, and it involves a number of databases, and there's a two-year lag in our data, and so I apologize, I sound like a bureaucrat, but it will take, it would take the system some time to isolate the efficacy of these programs.
I totally understand, and I thank you. Could we get one in March for the March meeting or something, or just sent out to us? Not today, I know. Thank you so much. Could we do that?
Chair Brooks, for the record, it sounds like that would be a great piece to add into new business, to see if there's something that can be done. Thank you, Regent Boylan. Regent Downs, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair Brooks. Regent Downs, for the record. To Chancellor Kiaga, so you mentioned that the institutions are currently absorbing the cost of these fee waivers?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And is that something, though, I mean, looking at our overall budget, if it's 3.6 million compared to a budget of roughly $2 billion or so, I mean, how big of an impact is that overall? Are there some schools that are more disproportionately impacted, is kind of my question?
For the record, Taylor Kiaga, so yes, it varies from institution to institution. Some have more students who apply for and are granted fee waivers, and some of those institutions are resourced differently because of the way the way the student credit hours operate. So I would never be one to tell you this is a de minimis amount. The institutions, as you know, all work on pretty lean budgets. And so I think that the, it is not the dollar amount that folks worry about today. It is, as the prior speaker has asked, the potential for this to grow. And if it continues to grow, then we would like the legislature to provide that support so we are not asking other students to subsidize these waivers.
And just my last question here, which of the fees are waived? Is it all fees, or is it, they still have a technology fee they have to pay? What else is expected of the students?
For the record, Taylor Kiaga, so we have reached an area where I am, at best, confused and at worst ignorant. And it vary, each fee waiver tackles a little different kind of fees. It's essentially, the short version is, if you think about the base registration fees is what it deals with.
Okay.
Some of the programs are all a little bit different, but for the confused and ignorant acting chancellor, think about it as the base registration fees which are waived.
And my opinion is that I would like to see if we can get the legislature to help sustain this with other funding sources. I'm with my colleagues on that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Vice Chair Scott has a question.
Thank you, Chair. And actually, Regent Boylan and yourself somewhat touched upon it. So it was the prior legislative session in which there was Senate Bill 152, I think it was Assembly, Senate? It was 152, 162, and 2, wow, something. I apologize. However, it was those two which Chair Brooks mentioned, and Chair Crawford, excuse me, and Regent Crawford mentioned in regards to military personnel, but also the indigenous students in which you just mentioned. Regent Boylan just touched upon, and yourself confirmed, that the institutions absorb that cost. So when these were unfunded two years ago, that was an issue in which was brought up during regents on public comment in addition to during the meeting itself. With the budget restoration and everything, it's going to be the influx of finances that will be coming. Will these, or do you, I don't want to say the word assume, do you hope that these will become funded mandates?
For the record, Taylor Kiaga, everything I'm hearing, that is the sense here. I'm a hopeful person. I like the legislative session, so I would hope that they become funded. Absent that funding, we will continue to absorb the costs, and the restorations don't cover this cost. This is foregone revenue prospectively, and as Mr. Klinger has explained, the formula looks backwards. So these, we very much need to work with the sponsors to be sure that monies are set aside, in my opinion.
Thank you. Regent Breger?
Regent Breger, for the record. This may be new business, but may we get the criteria and who approves those fees?
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Regent Del Carlo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that in my time on the board, I truly believe there's a purpose and a humanitarian need for fee waivers. However, I think it's wrong to have them as unfunded mandates, and that is what happened in the last session. I think $3.6 million is a lot of money, and that can grow over time. And I really think, I would appreciate you, Acting Chair Erchiagua, going back and working with them to get us, get all this funded. I think it goes down to the fundamental question is how our state funds education. And I know we're going to have a $5 million formula study, but it goes to a bigger question is how the state funds. I mean, we've already, we all know, you're either going to get more state appropriation or you're going to raise tuition and fees on students. And we know that this board, I certainly don't have an appetite to do this. We want to keep our education as accessible as possible. So I don't, I'm not opposed to the, to the, I just lost what the word was, of the fees, that we waived the fees, and I was very happy on the indigenous students. I thought that was really a good one, as will the foster students. But I really think the state needs to step up, especially when we've had a budget surplus, and it just goes, like I said, down to the fundamental, how does the state view education and the need for an educated population? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Before we entertain more questions, I believe it's interim Chair, I'm sorry, interim Vice Chancellor Renee Davis can provide some information regarding the question that Regent Boylan had posed, and perhaps we can just take care of that now.
Thank you, Renee Davis, interim Vice Chancellor for Economic and Student Affairs and Community Colleges. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that we do have on the March ARSA agenda, we have plans for a follow-up fee waiver presentation. This is the requested follow-up from Vice Chancellor Alba's presentation in the fall, and we will have some initial performance metrics on students who received fee waivers. We also will go over briefly the eligibility requirements and the fees covered. So I think that that presentation is going to answer a lot of questions that the board has. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that. So Chancellor, in hearing this information, and there are a couple of other regents who have questions, and I certainly want to provide time for them to ask those questions, but I'm wondering if you may agree that since this will be coming forward in March, and I guess what I would ask is, is there a timeliness issue on this particular item that if we hear it in March and take action in March, it is too late for your purposes of communication?
For the record, Taylor Kiaga, Mr. Chair, no. And I have enough sense of what I need to do to have these initial conversations for measures that are bill drafts today. So I'm good.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So what I'll do is, Regent McMichael and Regent Perkins have questions, but I think rather than, like I did with the last item, take a general consensus of the board, perhaps we just wait until we get more information in March, and that way we have, we can do a little bit more due diligence between now and March to make sure that we're executing the correct process for the Chancellor. Having said that, I'd like to turn it over to Regent McMichael, who has a question.
Mine is not a question, but a slight clarification. The old GI Bill as well as the new GI Bill. The old GI Bill, as well as the new GI Bill, is afforded to both active duty and retirees. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent. Regent Perkins?
Just something to add to that report that Renee mentioned about, are the fee waivers, like, first in? Or are they, how are they, are the fee waivers applied first, or after all other financial aid?
Great question. We'll report in March.
I think Regent Boylan is on deck. You have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Davis up north for that clarification. That's good. And then I'd like to say what Regent Del Carlo said is really important, that we pay attention to those things. Because I'm really not in favor of fee waivers or anything free, except for the foster kids and the homeless. Anybody else, well, I just have a problem with it. Regent McMichael's just mentioned that it's for active duty as well as retired. The GI Bill is what I'm talking about. So if it's for active duty, then, ooh, how do we do this and give the National Guard people fee waivers? And it's unmandated or anything? We carry the expenses, is what I'm saying, Mr. Arquiaga. So that's something, do we get something from the legislature? Or, thank you.
For the record, Dale Arquiaga, Mr. Chair, through you to Regent Boylan, I'd request that we deal with that when we talk about eligibility. I barely know what the GI Bill means and the differentiation between that branch of the armed forces and National Guard, I wouldn't presume. So perhaps if we deal with that in the March report.
I agree, Chancellor, and if it helps at all, Regent Boylan, what we were talking about specifically with the waivers for National Guard has already passed. And my question to the chancellor was in concern of, could anything be rolled back? But certainly, we can address the questions and comments and ideas that you posed in March. And with that, we will move to Regent Crawford.
Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record, I apologize after your statement. I was wondering if I should even say something, but I think it's very important to state that National Guard is a state entity, whereas Reserve or Active Duty are typically federal. So with the GI Bill, you have to serve 90 days to be eligible. With the Guard, it's typically one weekend a month that you support your state. So if you think about that one weekend a month, if you go two days a month for 12 months, that's only 24 days. You wouldn't be eligible for over, till about four years. With the Guard, they are not eligible for GI Bill. They're eligible to enlist in the Guard and then immediately get a state waiver on the day of enlistment. That's why the Guard needs waivers, and we cannot utilize GI Bills.
Thank you, Regent, for the clarification. Are there any other questions regarding this item? Can we, Chancellor, I would suggest that we just move on to your next item.
I'm happy to do so. I'm also happy I'm not as ignorant about the GI Bill as I thought I was. I was just afraid to answer the question. The next item that I need you all to talk about is you, not me, and not other student populations. Two items that will be before the legislature. Senate Joint Resolution 7, removing the board's constitutional authority. This is the second time this resolution will be heard. As you know, under Nevada's constitution, for the legislature to amend the constitution, it proposes a resolution in one session, it must then pass that in a second session, and then it is put to a vote of the people. This has happened previously with this matter, and the voters turned it down in 2020, if my memory is correct. And so the resolution has returned. And so I would request respectfully guidance from this board if you have a position on Senate Joint Resolution 7, which is about the Constitution and your power.
Thank you, Chancellor. Are there any regents that have any questions regarding this item? Are there any regents that would like, go ahead, Regent Boylan?
Thank you, sir. Now, when you say, do we have any questions about this? I know what this is. It was the same as question one in 2020. And I'm not sure, what are you asking us to do? Do we say, yeah, we're in favor of it, or maybe we're against it, or what the fudge is this, you know? It's, I'm not sure what we're supposed to do.
For the record, Dale Arquiaga, because the board does not have a policy on its own existence in the Constitution, I need you to tell me, do you want this to pass, or no?
No, from my side. It's simple.
All right. So I'll, thank you, Chancellor. I'll try to move this one along. Is there, in terms of consensus of the board, much like we did with the first item, is there anyone on the board that favors constitutionality of the University of Regents being pulled from the Constitution of Nevada? I'm going to offer that the consensus here, Chancellor, is that the board would not support any measures that have to do with removing the Board of Regents from the Constitution.
Thank you for the guidance. The second item related.
Sorry, go ahead. Regent Goodman, did you have a question? Okay.
I have a comment. I just want to say that the reason I ran for this office is because I wanted to make a difference. And so that's why I'm here. That's why I ran. And I believe that this is a very effective board. And the time that I've spent, I've enjoyed it. It's very capable staff. I've worked with varied government staff. The staff is capable. The regents are capable. And I just wanted to put my voice in that I agree with your consensus, wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Regent Goodman. Regent Perkins, did you have something to add?
Thank you. Is there any idea of what the legislator has to, legislators have to replace us? Is there any indication of that?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Go ahead, Chancellor.
For the record, Dale Arquiaga, thank you for moving us along. The next item would, is potential legislation to reduce the size of the board and/or reduce the term of office. So you all know, there are 13 regents today prescribed by state law. You serve a six-year term. In 2019, a similar bill to this topic was moved to reduce the size of the board to nine and the term of office to four. And that bill, which did not pass, would have been effective upon passage and approval of the constitutional amendment. It didn't move. There have, in that bill, there was also discussion that some of the remaining nine regents would be elected by the people of Nevada, and some would be appointed. And I apologize, ma'am, I don't remember the appointing authority. So the legislature has sometimes offered alternatives and sometimes not. Sometimes legislature has said simply, we can take it out of the Constitution, and then we'll tell you what we would replace it with. What I expect to this session is a bill that would reduce the size of the board and reduce your term of office, perhaps now, before the Constitution, a little question is settled, or perhaps upon that passage, should the voters of Nevada approve. And so, again, you don't have a policy that tells me you must have 13 regents who must serve six-year terms. I know the history. I lived through it. I have lived in Nevada my whole life. But I could use some guidance about that aspect of this, separate from the Constitution, size of the board and term of office.
Thank you for that answer. And if I can.
Sure, go ahead, Regent Perkins.
Along those lines, okay. I understand that there's been, like, no proof that an elected board, or no proof that an appointed board does greater or better work than an appointed, or an elected board. Us 13, I think I have to agree with Regent Goodman, is it provides all aspects of our community. I mean, we have people on here who have various degrees, various walks of life, various input that comes from across a wide, a very deep and wide knowledge base. And I think that's important for higher ed, because that's what we are, is academia. And for, to have someone outside of academia to look at academia from that point of view with those lenses is very important to keep us on the cutting edge and to move us forward as a system. So I guess I'm not in favor of less, we need 13 to make sure that we cover the rules as well as we cover the urban areas. And I think I'm in favor. I'm not in favor of reducing the terms, because I remember when I was elected, the decisions we made four years ago, I won't see those students graduate, or the majority of those students won't graduate before, until six years, because that's our average graduation, is six years later. So I would like to see of my policies, when I first, you know, when I was wide-eyed and bushy-tailed and green, if those policies are effective six years later. So I like the terms and the number, and the board itself.
Regent, Chair Brooks, for the record. Thank you, Regent Perkins. Regent Downs?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. Regent Downs, for the record. I would like to reiterate what Regent Goodman said, and Regent Perkins said. We're a representative body, and it's important that we have the number that we have and the terms that we have to serve the people of Nevada. And so I don't support reducing this or shortening the term, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Regent Downs. Regent Boylan?
Thank you, sir. I second all that, but I also have something else to say. I was on the State Board of Education before the chancellor worked with education there. And they started the same thing off with them, and they broke the board up. I find electing, selecting people is just a way of payback for politicians, to give back to guys who've helped them in their campaigns or whatever. The people's chance, the people's voice must be heard. They select us. The guy who was running against me for this position, he was in favor of all this, breaking up the board and having people's, because he had lots of money. But anyway, neither here nor there. So I'm totally against it. And six years, I don't want to run for this every two years or four years. It's, you know, it takes a lot of time running for an office, if any of us who've done it. And this board, 13 members, I'm getting used to them. We haven't had a region retreat yet, but I like them. And I think the more, the merrier. So I'm against it, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Boylan, and I appreciate the candidness of the conversation that we're having. Are there, before I say one or two things, are there any of the regents that have questions or comments regarding this item? What I'd like to offer is that, much like my colleague, Regent Boylan, stated, there is a distinction between an elected and an appointed person when you're talking about governance work. It's just a simple, I would offer fact of the matter, based on our history in terms of how things are assembled. It's also interesting to note that, to my count, there's 21 Nevada state senators that represent the state of Nevada. And there are 42 Nevada state assembly legislators that represent the state of Nevada. The board having 13 members is, has a lot to do with population growth of Nevada and board members being representative of the areas that they are being elected from. And I think that is a very important process in terms of election of Board of Regents. I would also offer that a six-year term, while that may seem like a lot of time, and frankly, it is, the purpose of that, though, is because the board is not operating on a daily basis to support higher education. And that we are having meetings that happen, you know, we have our quarterly meetings, then we have other meetings. And so what I'm offering is, the, there is an actual learning curve of understanding processes that we are, that we are provided with the opportunity to demonstrate this duty of care when it comes to our students and our institutions in terms of supporting the betterment of higher education throughout the state of Nevada. That lends to having a longer period of time to be able to, again, understand and navigate policies so that it best suits our students and campuses. With that, I will ask if there is any regent, just to get a consensus, that, any regent that believes we should reduce the number of regents that sit on the board and reduce term? I don't see anyone, Chancellor, so what I would offer is that, if you could, please take it to those members of the bodies in Carson City, that the board is not in favor of that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the guidance and suggested talking points. Appreciate it. It makes my job easier as your representative. Mr. Chair, I fear I have dominated your agenda by asking the questions that keep me awake at night the most. There are many other items here, so I would yield to you and the regents, you, ask me anything, as you say, Mr. Chair. Pick a topic from the list.
I appreciate that, Chancellor. For the record, Chair Brooks. So what I'll do is, I think we should, in all fairness to regents who have taken a look at this list and may have a comment regarding an item that perhaps has not been discussed, an opportunity to at least ask a question or make a comment. And then I would offer that there is probably another time that we will have to assemble to provide guidance for you regarding other messaging on the other items that have not been addressed. And with that, I would like to acknowledge Regent Crawford, who I believe has a question or a comment.
Thank you, Chair. Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record. I have a few items I would like to discuss on the list. First is number five for the Millennium Scholarship expansion in Nevada Promise. I am the first-year inaugural year scholarship earner of the Millennium Scholarship. And I was able to go to college because of it, be a first-generation college seeker. My daughter will be earning the Millennium Scholarship. And I think it's our job as regents, when we're out in our communities, to let our students know that our seniors and juniors, in their junior year, when they take their ACT, they need a 21 to be eligible for the Millennium Scholarship. So when you are out in your communities, please share that information. The next item that I would like to discuss is number six, collective bargaining for professional employees. I am in full support of this. From my understanding, it died last legislative session in the finance, with the Finance Committee, and now there's no fiscal note to that. So I am in full support of that as a person that has benefited as a child, spouse, and person in a professional organization that collectively bargains for me. The next item, I just have two more, is the number 12 legislative funding to address the shortage of K through 12 teachers. I am in full support of that. I am a principal, and I have seen the effects on students of not having a licensed educator. And if we don't pay for this now, we will pay for this in the future. So we need to make sure that we are addressing that shortage. And the last item is 13, the dual-credit programs. I am in full support of this. This is one of the most financially sound items for students getting a head start. I know we have AP courses. This one, I, dual-credit is fantastic. I am a graduate from CSN High School. My daughter is a senior right now at CSN High School, graduating with almost an associate's degree. We need to make sure that when we have dual enrollment programs, that we are servicing communities, both in the rural and in Title I populations. My school is currently supporting a high school down the street for dual enrollment, where the students come and teach my students to build that pipeline. So I'm a huge proponent of those dual-credit programs, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent. Regent Boylan?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Regent Crawford, for what you said. You stole all my words, and I'm not happy. But anyway, I agree with you totally. I'm so full of support for collective bargaining, and while we're doing that, I would say give them a raise, too. These guys are in the trenches. They're the frontline people. They are who really run education. Without having good, well-paid, happy professors and faculty, I don't think our students could be, you know, fully trained without faculty that are happy. Next thing, K through 12. And I'm very big in favor of K through 12. Regent Breger knows I used to come there and try to do things for K through 12 20 years plus ago. And I was, like I said, on the State Board, but why are we? But why are we addressing that? Why are we saying or discussing that this should or shouldn't be taken from us? I still want to understand that part.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Dale Urquaga, for the record, the Nevada system of higher education through its institutions is the largest teacher preparation program in the state of Nevada. And so funding to make it easier for students to attend our institution scholarships benefits us. They come to our institutions. So we have a very much hand-in-hand relationship with the Department of Education to produce more teachers more quickly across our institutions. And so in my view, as you know, having served in both the pre-K-12 system and this system, it is a joint partnership. And so support for future teachers who we are preparing is our business.
Oh, no, that I understand now. Thank you so much. So it's about the teachers, not about the wee little kids, you know, running around. All right. Thank you. One last thing, dual credit, amazing stuff. I support it. And I would rather get, put more money towards dual credit than free, what was that? Free waivers. So yeah, I support that, too. And thanks for the explanation, sir. Thank you, sir.
Regent Brager?
Thank you very much. And yes, he did come to our meetings. I think that technically 1 through 13 are all important. It's a matter of monies that will be allotted and how they are funded. But I think two for me would be the K-12, number 12 and number 13. The dual credit program is near and dear to my heart. I was a CCS trustee and would not get off the board until they did that in the ACT, the ACTs, the career technical academies. And those are proven facts of how students graduate and know where they want to go. And if we do that, we would have more students come to our four-year universities if they had the proper funding at our CSNs. And I feel very strong about that. I'm not unopposed to a four-year college. We all can't start there. And I think if we improve education, K-12, we will see the flow of students that should come through CSN and the dual credit. I think we need to work more closely with CCSD because they do lose some of their good students and that might be a problem for them. But they should see it as, I wish we didn't when we talk about pots. We should have one pot. And that pot should be educating our, the people that want to be educated. And if we could ever get to that point, and I'm hoping in these six years, and that's why I ran, I kind of did it opposite. CCSD, County Commission and Regent. That's usually opposite of what people do. But in, education is that important to me and that's why I ran. But if we would do all of these, but especially those two, boy, we would have kids going to not only a two-year or a four-year at CSN. And then one other thing that I'm going to ask if it's new business, but we need to look at certifications. I have 32 years in real estate and I have to get 36 hours in two years. And when you serve in other capacities, it's like a college degree. Also plumbers and electricians, do you all want to do your own things? We need to look at why that can't be a graduation component. And if that needs to be new business, then I just thought I'd pick it right here to say it.
Thank you, Regent Brager. It's great to see that much passion. Yes, there are some items that could be called for a new business.
Regent Downs?
I'm going to have a hard time following that one. So Regent Downs for the record. So I won't have quite the energy. But I do support all these as well. I do think the, I've seen in my different roles at my institution, the, the need for the student wellness concerns, especially mental health. Want to go down the list here, collective bargaining. If you know me, you know I'm a big proponent of collective bargaining. Worked very hard for that for decades now. And I have spent a lot of time in my professional life in dual credit programs. And I see the benefit across the board for students and for families, some money when they go to college. And as a parent, having kids going through it, too. There's, there's just a lot to it. So dual credit is great. And we need to support that as much as possible. Number 12, the funding for the K through 12 teachers to get that more going. One of the concerns I've, I've heard while I was campaigning especially in the rural areas, and I've also worked with other areas as well, but is that pipeline of teachers. And if we can tie it, any kind of legislation to programs within our institutions, I think we serve everyone very well. The communities, especially those who are trying the homegrown program, as well as our, our ING institutions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Regent Brown has a question.
Uh, thank you so much. I have just two quick comments and then a short question. Going through the list, I wanted to start with dual enrollment. Last month, I had the opportunity to go to UNR and listen to President Sandoval's passion and plans for expansion. And then yesterday, we were at President Whitfield's State of the University and he spoke about UNLV's expansion. And I think all of this is promising and I'm optimistic to see that we're further investing in more dual credit programs statewide. Second comment, I'd like to voice my support for collective bargaining. I know three out of the eight institutions already have it. We support it as ING and I'd like to see equitable treatment for our system-wide faculty, just like other Nevada public employees. And then my quick question is about Senate Bill 70. And I know the name, image and likeness contracts are fairly new. You know, the NCAA lifted their policies. I read through the bill. This seems to just be like a clarification on how we're going to operate, set in some processes and around athletic contracts. I just had a quick question. As far as you know, are any of these proposed changes, are they different from different, from other states around student disclosures? And the reason why I ask is because I just want to make sure that it doesn't prevent students from coming because we're asking for more paperwork.
Thank you, Regent Brown. For the record, Dale Urquaga, so ma'am, I do not know the answer to that question, but I do have an expert on our legal staff. Our, meaning you and the Chancellor's Office legal staff. So I will check with legal and get you and the board a response as a Regent request so that we're all clear before session begins.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chancellor. Regent Cruz Crawford has a question?
Hey, I just, thank you, Chair. Regent Cruz Crawford for the record. I just have one comment because I know there was a lot about dual enrollment. I haven't seen the bill draft yet. I don't know if there is a bill draft for that. But we did talk about CSN, but I wanted to talk briefly on my experience. There's a whole bunch of different ways for dual enrollment to happen, some very cost-effective ways for dual enrollment to happen, meaning in students' high schools. And so working at, in a community that is very low socioeconomic, but has a lot of heart. We have students that don't have access to go to CSN because they don't have the transportation. They go to their neighborhood schools. And one of our neighborhood schools is Rancho High School. And it has partnered with Nevada State College on a CTE program, a dual enrollment program for teaching and learning. That means that students in ninth and 10th grade do take a teaching and learning course. And then in an 11th and 12th, they take a Level III and IV and they get college credit. And then they walk across the road to my school and teach my students. And they have a real in-depth college experience. The cost is very low because it is the high school housing, sorry, the house, the high school facilities they're already engaged in. But they are leaving with six teaching and learning credits, which builds on that K through 12 issue. Also, we're enrolling students that look like the students they're servicing. And there's lots of research that shows that that increases college enrollment for those students. So I did want to tell you, there is other ways outside of these satellite campuses. There should be an opportunity for every student, regardless of where they live, to have that opportunity in their high school. So I'm excited to see this bill draft. And I just want to explain how that might look differently than we might think of dual enrollment in the past. And thank you, Nevada State College, for, for growing our educators.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll go to Regent Perkins and then Regent Downs has a question.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Let's start with collective bargaining for professionals and employees. I am fully in favor of that to, I guess, all other state employees have it, so we need to include that group also. The legislation and funding for the, to address the shortage of K through 12 teachers is also in favor of that. And the dual and credit, the dual credit programs, I think I have to say the same thing as Regent Cruz Crawford. Not only do we need to be doing it system-wide, but we need to touch every high school. Because some of the high schools that dual enrollment is, is in now, those kids or those students are going to go to college kind of in spite of us, you know? So we need to touch the students that didn't have, that never thought about going to college and give them the opportunities that can be afforded for, by college.
Thank you, Regent. Regent Downs, do you have a question?
Yes, Regent Downs for the record. Thank you, Chair Brooks. So Chancellor, number 10, the release of student transcripts. Well, fees are owed. Does there any fiscal impact on that?
For the record, Dale Urquaga, I apologize, Regent Downs. I did not hear the question. Is there any?
Number 10, is there a fiscal impact we have on that yet? So I assume this is, what this is saying is that students can still get their transcript despite having a balance owed?
Yes. I apologize. For the record, Dale Urquaga, so the way the current policy operates, if student owes us monies, we will not release their transcript. There is an Assemblywoman moving this bill and has been working very closely with our business officers. And actually, a policy proposal will come to this board, I think, as soon as March. Interim Vice Chancellor Renee Davis there next to you has been working very closely with both the bill sponsor and Mr. Clare's staff, as well as the student records staff. So there is the potential for lost revenue over time. There, they will pre, they will bring to you a manner in which that might be addressed and still honor the bill sponsors' wish. So more to come on this one. Her initial bill draft would have caused a fiscal impact. We are working very closely with her and with your staffs and will bring you some recommendations, as well as the Assemblywoman in March.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Brooks for the record. Chancellor, we, we appreciate that you're still standing in front of us after an hour of continued conversation and very robust dialogue. And I'm, I'm interested in the board's thoughts because there are more things that are coming forward regarding some of these items. The ones that were essentially at the highest priority we have had a discussion on, and that priority was not necessarily set by us, but by our Chancellor in terms of messaging that he felt he needs immediately. There are other items, as you have heard, that will be brought up and brought forth to us in March. And so I'm, I'm trying to get a, a quick consensus based on the amount of time that, that we have spent on some of these items, which I'm, I'm positive we did not account for, considering we have other, other business. And what I'm hoping is that maybe we can get more information about additional items. And if that means that we hear some of these items in March, great. If it means that we have to have a special meeting because there is a new level of urgency by the Chancellor that he has to have consensus on something, then we handle it that way, rather than continuing with the, the process where we're at right now, where we're still in, in discovery for a lot of this. Chancellor, do you have an, an opinion on that?
For the record, Dale Urquaga, I would agree with the Chair. Plenty of time, more to come. I appreciate the board's conversation about policy, legislative policy and about students in this manner. It's, you know, I'm excited and I'm sassy today. This is good for me to hear. You've given me talking points. You, I now know who I can turn to, or Alejandro can turn to, to ask you to come and testify. So I very much appreciate the conversation. I'm also very cognizant of your days. And so I would agree with the Chair that, one, I'll follow the policy where I can. And two, we can always come back. But I, I do, I appreciate you giving us your opinions and sharing your passions.
Regent Boylan, you, you were in the queue and I don't want to not call on you if you have a, a, a question.
Yeah, quick one, sir. Actually, it's an opinion, not so much a question. And I thank Regent Downs for bringing it up. I told you I'm started liking these new people. I'm getting used to them. It's good. And he brought this up. Giving the transcripts to students who still have fees pending or whatever, I'm totally against that. Because I think students need to know that in the real world, they're not going to get anything free. And I've had transcripts delivered from UNLV all over the world. And I never owed anything. I paid my $3 or whatever it was. So I think this is a bad idea. Whichever legislative person is thinking of doing a nice thing for students, I think it's a bad thing. We've got to teach them responsibility and say, hey, guy, you owe this, you're going to pay. That's all. I'm just being nice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Regent Boylan. Chair Brooks for the record. So I think this, this kind of does demonstrate that there are some areas that are going to require more exploratory conversation so that we can help you solidify messaging that you feel that you need. What I'd like to do is take a 10-minute administrative break, considering that you are going to be speaking in front of us again regarding strategic planning. And so we'll do that. We'll take a 10-minute administrative break. Thank you. Okay. Chancellor, I will ask you then to continue with our agenda items and have the discussion regarding strategic planning and the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Dale Urquaga, I realize you're tired of listening to me talk, so I'm going to go as quickly as I can. Beginning actually in calendar year 2021, the former Chancellor launched a strategic planning process. There were committees, there were listening groups, there were task forces. And that work came to my desk when I became the Acting Chancellor on July 1st. I then worked with the board's ad hoc strategic planning committee chaired by Regent Carvalho. And we went through a series of meetings discerning, distilling what we had heard and crafting a new strategic planning framework that will act as the master plan. The Regent's handbook uses this word, master plan, which sounds rather devious. It's just antiquated language. Your planning framework sits on top of all of the institution's individual strategic plans. This is not a fully robust strategic plan. The strategic planning nerds like me love with lots and lots of goals and strategies. We are adding this into the institution's plan. And I wanted it done quickly through that committee for two reasons. One, as we go into the legislature, I wish to be able to represent your goals and your general strategic vision. And that had not been updated since the 2018-2021 plan. And second, you are this afternoon kicking off your Chancellor search. And I think you ought to be able to communicate to those potential applicants, again, your strategic vision. So we did not, in this process, touch the ING mission statement that you see before you now. It's in the handbook. We all agreed it was in good stead. We did, however, create the One System Worlds of Opportunities vision statement. We worked, a lot of, a lot of work went into that, a lot of wordsmithing. And I think the committee landed in a very nice place. The committee asked, we, the committee also did some research over the values expressed in the institutional plans. We did a little word cloud. The committee prioritized those based on which they saw the most as equity, excellence, collaboration, innovation, accountability and inclusion. And then the committee asked me to add some language around those so that we understood what the terms might mean and to be sure that each of those reference students. And rather than stuff the word student into a sentence, I put the words students at the top, whereas I think where they belong. And so the values then center around that. So that, that is additional language. The goals, slight revisions to the five previous goals established during Chancellor Riley's time. And then we added a new goal, which I think is important, given the current climate, to ensure system coordination, accountability and transparency. A lot of heart for that during the committee discussion. I asked that the committee give me what, for lack of a better nerdy term, I came to call performance imperatives. One being about equity in our staffing models and the other being about adequate funding equitably distributed. And so this gives me in this year some framework within which to work with, for example, the idea council and the idea council. committee, to dig deeper into the demographic data that we know about our leadership, faculty, and staff. And I will say, I am amending a word here. The, the language originally proposed says that, so staff can better serve our students. Oddly, there's an implication there that they're not doing well today, and so the word "best" somehow shifts that to, there's no burden there or no slight there, but that it is a standard to which we aspire. So that's a slight change from the committee's last version. And then we have already begun, as you've heard from CFO Klinger, a conversation with the governor's office about adequate funding equitably distributed, as we think about not just this budget, but the funding formula study. This slide will make your head hurt. It is not meant to do so, but it is a signal of what will come. The old strategic planning framework had many of these metrics, and these are progress metrics. These are not accountability metrics. No one's going to come and rap the presidents on the knuckles over the number of doctoral degrees conferred. These are progress metrics, and we have added a number, and I should think the new chancellor would add more progress metrics. And it's my intention, while I remain the acting chancellor, to convene the research folks, both the institutional research team that reports to me and the institutional research folks, to talk about what are the benchmarks here? Where are we starting so you can begin to see some more graphs? Many of these already exist, if you spend a lot of time on our website in the data center, but lots, lots more to come here over this year as we dig in deeper. The, the committee was really directive to me to set targets and begin to measure outcomes, so we're not just measuring, here's how we're doing. We're, we have a goal out there of where we wish to be. That process will take time. I, my eyes being bigger than my stomach or my appetite or whatever it was my mother used to say, thought, sure, we'll do that. Okay, that's a really long, hard process. I learned very quickly. And so we will, again, in this coming year, go through a process with the presidents to renew the graduation persistence and completion targets. They expire in 2025, and we'll set new targets, likely out at 2023. A target I would recommend to this system, in the old days, we had an expression that 60% of Nevadans would have a post secretary credential or degree, so not just a four-year degree, but a certificate as well. That's based on a body of national work, which is also expiring in 2025. But I think having, as a state, a benchmark like that is important. So more work to come on this, and, and the board would be informed while I am your acting chancellor and certainly by your new chancellor. And so for those who do not think simply in words like I do, I try to put it on a little box chart. I am not a very creative person, so it's a box chart comprised of words, best I could do. Andrew is, Mr. Klinger is the whiz at PowerPoint presentations. I am not. But this is sort of my way of thinking about this as a framework. The top is the vision. Down the left-hand side are the, the goals established by you. Across the bottom is a goal, but it is a sort of foundational goal. On the right-hand side, those imperatives, our people, our funding are the most important things. And then in the middle is sort of this progress of, this progression of metrics, from enrollment through post-completion targets. Lots of sentiment from the community that we ought to measure things like, well, what is the starting salary of our graduates? And are our graduates burdened with student debt? Those are post-completion targets that this system could examine over time. So I know I raced to that. I did so in the interest of time, but I also did so because the committee has vetted this over a year. That committee report was actually sent to this board, and you approved that report. And so you've, in a sense, already approved this. I have tweaked some language and added, as I said, corrected a word, and added a longer list of metrics. So my request, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions, of course, if you're not tired of hearing from me, but my request is that the board adopt this as the master plan. It gives me a new communications matrix for the legislature on Monday, and it gives you a communications matrix for the search for your next chancellor. There.
There you go. Thank you, Chancellor. We appreciate that. What I'd like to do, because typically we do have discussion after a motion, I would like to see if any regent would like to motion that we adopt the strategic planning and ENSI master plan as presented.
Mr. Chair, Regent Perkins here. Yes, I would like to make that motion that we adopt the strategic plan and the ENSI master plan for possible action. Great job on the presentation and the wording.
So what I, Chair, Chair Brooks, for the, for the record, what I heard was Regent Perkins make a motion to approve. I heard Regent McMichael, Regent Boylan, I'm sorry, second the motion, so that it is moved and has been seconded to approve the strategic planning and ENSI master plan as it has been presented. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, one quick one.
Go ahead, Regent Boylan.
I'm just pulling back my second because I think Regent Tarkanian also seconded it, and I was just trying to beat Mr. McMichael, too. But so I think it was Tarkanian, Regent Tarkanian, who seconded it.
Thank you for clarification. So if we could change the record to demonstrate that, in fact, Regent Tarkanian seconded the motion to approve the strategic planning and the ENSI master plan as presented today. Thank you, Regent Tarkanian. Is there any other discussion?
I'd just like to thank Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Regent Tarkanian. So the, the question now that has been presented is on the adoption of the motion to adopt the strategic planning and the ENSI master plan as it has been presented. Those in favor, please say aye or yes.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed, please say no.
Aye.
Thank you. I, I believe that has passed. Thank you, Chancellor, for your time. We appreciate it. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for indulging my big sassy day out. I'm done talking.
So we, thank you. So now we will move on to our next agenda item, which is new business. Is there any new business items for consideration at a future meeting? Laura, I'm sorry, Regent Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Why the graduate stipend difference between UNR and UNLV? I'd like to hear more about that. The grad rate versus persistence for the fee waivers, I think that was already included in one of the reports or will be included. And lastly, prison education was not listed on one of the priorities, and I think that's very important.
Ma'am, could you see the last one? Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Prison education?
Oh, aye.
To be expanded.
All right.
Regent McMichael?
Yes, Regent McMichael, for the record. For the next board meeting, I believe that would be in March, I would like to propose fees and tuition waived for any congressional Medal of Honor recipient that wishes to reside in the state of Nevada. This would be a feather in our cap, since there's only 22 that are living and only two are younger than 50. So it might be a mute point, but it would be a very honorable and respectful addition to send to the state legislation for approval, and it'd be a feather in our cap, because we are battle-born.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent. Regent Elcarlo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wouldn't, I don't know what the process is, but I would like some means of identifying when people are available for special meetings. I personally was traveling today on Regent Business for the ACCT Board Directors Meeting. I've been able to get on and off the call. I certainly couldn't make all the comments I wanted to make, but going forward, I'd really appreciate it. So many of us are busy in our lives, work full-time jobs, many do, and I think it would be really great if the board started using a doodle tool or something similar. Certainly, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair, you guys would have to be, you know, your schedule would be first, but give us options and then pick the meeting where the most of us can travel. And I do know there's another Regent traveling to the same conference today because she's on a committee, and I just, you know, these are important meetings, and especially this legislative agenda, strategic plan, and, you know, we, we have a voice, too, and like to be heard. Thank you.
Regent Breger?
So since I cheated before on my new business, no. What would be the best way? I would like to see what daycares we have on our facilities and how we can increase that so that we can get people back into the workforce, and that goes along with that workforce development factor. And then, I guess I'll just do that for right now. I don't want to really add any, I'm not looking to add anything to the March meeting, so futuristically, if that could go, or if it just needs to be a request to be looked at.
Thank you. Regent Boylan?
Thank you, sir. I second what Regent Elcarlo said, but I also think for a future meeting, we need to discuss having a regent's retreat where we can discuss more openly or in detail with the lawyer, Mr. Jimmy there, to make sure we don't break any open meeting laws, but we need to have that soon, so that we get to understand as a team, because we're still working as individuals. We are a team, and we need to go to.
Thank you, Regent Boylan. I'll take the liberty of saying that that is in process. I don't see any other regent with new, I'm sorry, what's that?
Regent Cruz.
Go ahead, Regent.
Thank you, Chair. One of the questions that a constituent asked me to look into, I don't know if this is a request or a presentation, is we used to have some community health care clinics that were tied on CCSD school campuses where students could get vaccines or health care. For example, I have several students at my school that don't have their vaccines, so they couldn't come to school. So do you, is there a way we can get information of how many of those are in existence, basically the partnership within K through 12 settings on those community-based, sorry, on the, on the land of the school? Sorry, my brain is gone right now. I'm on a low-calorie diet right now.
That's okay, Regent. This is Chair Brooks, for the record. The short answer is, is yes, we could always take a look at items that are brought forth during this new business agenda piece and bring something either to you for clarification or to the board in a meeting. And now we will move on to public comment. Is there any public comment in Elko?
There is no public comment in Elko.
Thank you. Is there any public comment in Reno?
There is none.
Thank you. Is there any public comment in Las Vegas?
Good afternoon. Doug Unger, D-O-U-G, U-N-G-E-R, president of the UNLV Chapter of Nevada Faculty Alliance and Government Affairs Representative. Thank you for the good conversations today. I just want to assure this board and all our state leaders that NFA representatives are there, meeting with legislators, advocating for the ENSI budget and ENSI legislative goals pretty much on a daily basis. We're all a part of the same team. Also, I would, many questions have come up today that have me jumping out of my seat, because I feel like faculty are uniquely qualified to answer them. The whole history of graduate-student stipends, for example, I know by heart. I came here to found a graduate program, and I have 32 years of experience with that issue. We have faculty members who can answer almost any question that you have. Please, we reach out to us when you have questions, and we'll put you in touch with the faculty expert who can actually inform you about all of this, because we have a longer institutional memory than most of our campus leaders do, and, and, pardon me for saying it, that many of you do. The other issue that I brought up has to do with the public-facing advertising that ENSI does and all of our institutions do. I know it's not intentional. I know it was done by marketing consultants, but please note that faculty are almost entirely invisible on your institutional advertising. Then the word "faculty" appears exactly twice on the ENSI website, on the GBC and WNC logo. University of Nevada Reno has a research function that features a faculty member, but none of the other websites, even when you link into them, show us. I would like to cordially suggest the solution is to remedy that by featuring a faculty link, using your faculty members more. And if I may have 15 more seconds, Chair, I'd like to say I'm in the process of looking for schools for my granddaughter, and one of the first things we do is look at who's going to teach you. You're missing out on a marketing opportunity by not featuring and profiling faculty on the advertising for ENSI and its institution. So thank you for considering that, and I know it's an oversight and not intentional. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Do I have to press a button?
This is Chair Brooks, for the record. No, we can, we can hear you. I believe the mic is on.